All right, we'll get started. This is the Thursday, March 16th, 2023, meeting of the Rockport Planning Board. Right now, I can see that there are four members of the board present. And absent right now is Harry Corzlin, but he may show up later. So we'll get started with the public comment period, which we have at the beginning and toward the end of every meeting. This allows members of the public to comment on anything relating to planning and try to keep your comments concise and we'll select Mr. Moderator, Enforcer. Just people raise their hands and we'll choose them in the order that they raise as best we can.
I have a hand up from Laura Fillmore Evans.
I'm sorry, who is that from?
Laura Fillmore Evans.
Fillmore Evans, okay. Okay, good.
Hi, thank you for hearing me. I have a comment to make in my capacity as Chair of the Ad hoc Water Committee, on which Eric Hutchins is sitting and he's sorry that he can't be here tonight. So I told him that I would mention a note that he sent to you folks on March 8th. And he said he apologized that he couldn't be here. And this has to do with the zoning articles that will be presented at the April 1st town meeting. And he asked me to just read them because he's concerned. He said, if I may read it into the record, in my absence to the public hearing, I would thank the Planning Board for taking the initiative to update.
Yes, just to stop you for a second. We did get his comments and they were filed with the Planning Board on the
Oh, good.
The time of the public hearing that we had last Thursday, so.
So there's no need to read them into the public record?
I don't think so. They're in the record now.
Okay, yeah, he's just concerned about the disparity between the map and the language of the proposed bylaw. And I was hoping that you folks would make a change to that so that to disambiguate it for future.
This is the same comment that he sent by email to us as a planning board, right?
Yes, it was on March 9th.
Yeah, okay, it's the same one. It has to do with the language, I believe, that was said if the water Water Supply Protection Overlay District line goes cuts through a parcel that the entire parcel would be subject to the bylaw, I think.
Exactly, yes, Section 6.
Yeah, which is language was the which is taken directly from the model bylaw that was written by the Department of Environmental Protection. It is their language that we have incorporated. So anyway, just pointing that out, you know.
Okay, yeah, and he's asking that it be eliminated because it's going to vastly increase the amount of watershed protection lands. That's my understanding, Mr. Shaw. I mean, I'm not the expert.
No, I understand. I'm just telling you why it's in there. It wasn't like we anybody on the Planning Board decided to throw that in. It's something that we will discuss certainly, yeah. Okay.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fillmore Evans. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have a hand from Toby Arsenian.
Okay.
Thank you, Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. What Laura Evans was discussing, what Eric Hutchins has thought better of, was the subject of one of my amendments. Whether or not it's language that came from the state, it is not right that the text of a bylaw say one thing and the maps say something else. So if you're going to present it in its present form, I do believe, you know, common sense, fair play, that the maps need to reflect, you know, what is in fact jurisdictional, that is, all of the lots that that line crosses. I have an amendment in which I'll offer to eliminate that, but it would be that section. It would be far better if you took Eric Hutchins' hint and did it yourselves. Thank you.
Okay, I just wonder what happens with a zoning. We have different zoning districts and sometimes properties will be it'll be a zoning line which doesn't show all the parcels in the town. And one has to figure out where the line for one zoning district begins and where it ends. That's a pretty common thing, but and they aren't surveyed lines either, so you don't know exactly where they are. So this is, I believe this is somewhat similar to that, but maybe I'm wrong. Okay. Anyway, any other comments?
Nope, that's it.
I'm sorry?
That's all.
Okay, so we'll go to the approval of minutes. We've got the minutes from February 16th and March 2nd. And we're we're caught up after these. We're actually going to be caught up because the next meeting for the minutes is this meeting now. But these are quite, these minutes are quite extensive. By the way, Harry Corzlin is now present. Hi, Harry. But does anybody have any additions or deletions or comments about any of these minutes?
Number five.
Wait, which, let's talk about February 16th first.
Five member items.
Oh, okay.
There's Mill, there's Will Millhouse. I just, the name's not capitalized. I assume that's his first name. And CHAPA is an acronym, right? Yes.
Okay, well, those are pretty straightforward.
I think it means meet with Millhouse.
With Millhouse, yes. That would make sense. Okay, any other comments on February 16th?
Yeah, just a little cleanup, you know, it's go up to two approval of minutes. Second line down.
What? Say that again?
Yeah, Section 2 approval of minutes.
Yeah.
Second line down, all the way to the end, spell that correctly, accept.
Accept, right.
Yeah, no, you know, it does go to show that I'm paying attention. Just maybe another thing under Section 4, discussion on setting public hearing. Fourth line down says because of the train, the town. How about if we rephrase that to say because of the presence of the MBTA station?
How about just because of the MBTA station?
Yeah.
Fine.
And then maybe another three lines down from that. Planning Board will ask for grant money to obtain professionals to help do this. I don't know what to do this is, but I suspect it's to navigate this request under Chapter 3A.
Yeah, it's to analyze, it's a little longer than that, but it's analyze the zoning, the multifamily housing zoning for compliance by the town, you know. That would be I know what I know what you're what we're saying. All right.
Down about another 10 lines, you see where it says it's the line that starts with where they couldn't even break a quorum?
Wait a second, this is in the same paragraph?
Yeah, it's a long paragraph.
Yeah.
It's down about 10 lines.
Oh, I see it, yeah, the town, the land town meeting where they couldn't even break a quorum.
I thought maybe if we restated that to say where a quorum could not be maintained.
Yep, that sounds fun to me.
Okay.
Six public comments. Second line and the second end of the that first sentence Cape and Tool Company, I just add site.
Okay.
Next line down, state ask the harbor harbors? About state asks the harbor communities such as Fall River?
There's an area which the state asked the harbors. And also they want to be a part of a designated port. There shouldn't be a comma there, but you know. Harbor communities would be fine.
And then the second to the last line before the adjournment section. You're involved in it when it comes forward, I'm sorry, before that. Planning Board needs to be on top of it before the applicants come to how about the Planning Board for site plan review?
Are you talking about the last sentence?
It's actually the second to last sentence.
If the last sentence doesn't make any sense, I just cross it out. It doesn't mean anything.
Yeah.
So this would be whole section of state law, as long and complicated, thinks you need to get it out and start suffering through it?
I think that's probably a quote.
Probably accurate.
Yeah, well, okay, that sounds good. We can just leave it. I mean, you know, it's not.
I have a couple.
Wow, everyone's read this thing.
But under number one public comment.
Say that again, number one public comment, yeah?
Number one public comment, the 123, fourth line down at the end, Rosa or or Day should be Ordez, O R D A Z.
Okay.
And the following line Harbor Light is all one word.
All right.
Okay, so.
Right.
Okay. All right, well, let's get that's in on this, then motion to adopt the minutes of February 16th, 2023 with changes as stated.
So moved.
Motion by Tom, seconded.
Second.
Seconded by Peter, roll call vote, Harry.
Hi.
Peter.
Hi.
Bob.
Hi.
Hi.
And I'll vote in favor, Carrie, with changes, okay. All right, we'll go to the next set of minutes. March 2nd. Additions, deletions, changes.
In the second line, I'm the Chase Chairman. I think it should be Vice.
Wait, where are we now?
In the present. Attending.
Oh, are you talking about way at the top?
Way at the top.
Way at the top, the Chase Chairman.
Chase Chairman. I don't know what that is. Probably means something bad in some language.
Okay.
Probably voter, too.
Any others?
Down in number four. I think we go back and forth between butters plural and butters possessive. Butter doesn't have an S on the end of it, just should be apostrophe S.
Well, wait a second. Are you talking about a butters or butters?
Butter is the family name butter.
Oh, okay.
So in the fourth line, it's apostrophe S.
Oh, this is item four.
Yeah, sorry. The fourth line and fifth line within match the sixth line.
Alrighty. S apostrophe, or is it butter singular or butter?
Apostrophe, the name is singular.
Yeah, okay, like butter and then an S apostrophe.
Like butter.
Like butter. Okay, got it. Anything else?
All right, we spelled Chris Kuschel's name wrong.
What?
We spelled Chris Kuschel's name wrong. Is that something to correct at the bottom of page two?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, it's got a C in there.
Yeah, yeah.
And then number four, sturdiment is spelled incorrectly there on the title of item four.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Sturdiments are the butters of butters.
Butters of butters.
You could just put that in instead.
Alrighty. Well, these are pretty, you know, minor things, which is good. If there aren't any other substantive changes, we should have a motion to approve with corrections.
So moved on number five, is that number units right, 657?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep, it's sounds like a lot, but it's correct.
I have moved to accept as amended.
Okay, motion by Tom, second. Anybody seconded? Harry seconded. Motion to approve with changes, roll call vote, Harry.
Hi.
Peter.
Hi.
Bob.
Hi.
Mom. Hi.
I'll vote in favor, 50 with changes, okay. As I said earlier, we are now current with our minutes, which is something to celebrate.
It's great.
I mean, it's pretty darn good. Okay, next item. This is the resubmitted ANR for Cavaness on 911 Drummond Road. Was just to change.
Looks good.
Change from lot to parcel. And I, you know, they've changed it. We don't really need any discussion. This is kind of, we said we would, that was, if that change is made, we'll just approve it. And I think what I'm going to do is put in the in the application that to save the applicants from this is to say, don't you know, don't call them lots, call them parcels unless you actually plan to maybe build something on it because under the definition of a lot in the zoning bylaw, a lot is defined as a piece of land, you know, that could be have a building or structure on it. So if we're just looking at a little corner or something, it'd be parcel. So anyway, motion to
To endorse.
To endorse the ANR submitted by Meyer and Cavaness for 911 Drummond Road.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Peter Cutner, seconded by Tom, roll call vote, Harry.
Hi.
Peter.
Hi.
Robert.
Hi.
Mom.
Hi.
And I'll vote in favor. The plan will be endorsed. Probably you'll get a call as the applicant here. Maybe, maybe not. But they'll get a call from Mary when we all have signed the plan and the Mylar. And it's ready to be picked up and filed.
There's a hand up.
I was, Iowa. Deborah, you're here. You're here on this, aren't you? Can't hear her. She's got her hand raised. Could you unmute?
Deborah, you need to let me unmute you. You keep on remuting yourself. You don't have the ability to unmute. There you go.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for approving the plan. And I'll wait to hear from Mary to pick it up.
Okay, offset. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda. This is review of the applications and discussion of about scheduling a public hearing for the landing group in connection with site plan review for 175 Granite Street and an application to fill application, which actually is under Section 13. It used to be Section 12, you know, recently, for that same property, 175 Granite, which is the landing group property and then kind of a companion fill removal application by the Yankee Clipper LLC for removal of Phil at 96 Granite Street. These are two applications. We've had quite a few submissions on both of these. All these submissions, I believe, have been posted, Tom, on our website under pending applications. So anybody, Tom's made a great job with that. So anybody who wants to review them, they're on our website under pending applications. And the land, the reason these are related is because the properties appear to be owned by the same individual underneath the corporations and also that their fill that is proposed to be removed, the Yankee Clipper site, which is right next door to the inn at 96 Granite is going to be used to fill a portion of the property at 175 Granite Street, which is the old Cape and Tool Company. And we also have site plan review for that or some parking areas that are going to be established. And I see Jeff Angley is here and also Alexandria Castaldo, both of whom are counsel for the applicants. I don't know if you, what you want to say now, but you can say the floor is yours.
Well, thanks, Mr. Shaw. Good evening to you and to all the members of the board. Nice to kind of be up in Rockport again, at least in a Zoom setting. So thank you for the summary, Mr. Shaw, because that was great. I like to think of these, though, as the 175 Granite, which is the Cape and Tool Company site. There's a pending application, it's a special permit application for Phil and site and view. And then we've decided to come along and file our application for parking site plan review just because we might as well do it all at one time. I will note, and actually, this was Mr. Shaw that actually keyed us into it, that that the Planning Board alone is not the sole authority in the town for approval of an extraction or removal permit at the Yankee Clipper site at 96 Granite. That requires an approval by the Board of Selectmen as well. And so certainly happy to talk about logistics. We couldn't find any actual application forms in the town for getting before the selectmen. And so we tried a couple of times to reach out to the town administrator, but we haven't been able to touch base. So our plan was just to go ahead and file that application under the general bylaw for approval. And that general bylaw in the town of Rockport actually requires a joint hearing before the selectmen, the planning board and the Conservation Commission. So you probably ought to be really be thinking about how we coordinate that. And I had made a request to Mr. Shaw. I think on a phone call. Does it make sense of just to have when the planning board considers the site plan review special permit? Does that happen simultaneously with the joint hearing that the general bylaw requires with the selectmen? I throw it out to you, right? I think that's for the board to discuss and decide. We just want to, you know, get through the process and we'll do what, you know, whatever the town would like us to do to make that happen. So but that's just that little extra complexity on the extraction permit at 96. So if you folks would like, I'm happy to talk about any of those pending applications, any questions you folks have before a public hearing or hearings are scheduled.
I have some thoughts. Mr. Angley. I did actually speak with the DPW and the town administrator today.
Oh, great.
Just to kind of, you know, get their thoughts on this. And although these applications are related, they're actually let's say this, the 175 Granite Street application could and probably would go forward without the 96 Granite Street application. Is that simply just removal of earth, which is going to be used on the 175 site? And the rest of the fill is going to be, you know, trucked in from offsite for 175 and the, you know, the Department of Public Works representatives had some thoughts on that, which, you know, maybe it's a little premature to go into that now because it's, you know, a lot of it's kind of technical stuff and you know, why are they using such a small truck and, you know, it, you know, things like that. And I don't know if that is necessary to address today. I think maybe we should talk about just legitimately, how are we going to do this so everyone gets their hearing? You know, in a timely way, we don't have any duplication of efforts. In other words, as you pointed out, there's a, you know, a joint hearing with the Board of Selectmen and HanCom and us for the 96 Granite. There is no such thing for the 175 Granite Street. There's no point hearing, which makes the scheduling, you know, immensely easier for that reason. And then the other thing I think we need to talk about today, because this was brought up in our discussions with the other, with the DPW and the administrator is we're going to need to have our, really, an outside consultant assist the Planning Board in reviewing your plans. And I'm not saying by that that there's anything wrong with them. They're good plans, but there may be things on them that need to be discussed and possibly changed. And we need to have our own consultant. This is just too much for us to do on our own without professional, our professional help. So one of the other things we wanted to talk about tonight is is retaining, you know, a motion to retain a consultant and also an amount as per the bylaw for the applicant to pay to the town of Rockport to be held in escrow in an interest-bearing account to pay for the, or at least to fund the town's consultant. So those, you know, we need to go forward with that because where else are we going to go right now? With this is specifically for 175. I think 96 is easier just because 96 is so much easier. One comment that did come up was that the soil that's being removed, has that ever been tested for any, you know, contaminants or anything, if it's going to be taken from 96 and placed on 175? Anybody ever done that?
Still not that I know of. I think as far as I understand, that's all, you know, virgin land that's never been used before. It's a kind of a big ridge that runs through the property. But I understand the issue, maybe we have a condition.
To you guys, because I don't think any land in that area, which, you know, as you know, or may not know, that was a pretty heavily used industrial area, not too few, too many years ago, that anything down there could be called virgin. I mean, it's, you know, who knows what it was used for six years ago, we don't even know. So you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, the end, that end's been there a long time, but I don't know about the adjoining parcel, yeah, so sure. But, yeah. Yeah, well, look, were you looking for the consultant for basically then all, both properties? Or is that the idea or just?
I would think the consultant, the primary interest of the consultant would be on one seventy-five. I don't think ninety-six, I mean, that I can see, I mean, this is after one meeting, has any issues, you know, in terms of ninety-six, although you do, there is a provision in ninety-six, there is a provision in the law that provides for the posting of an undertaking or a bond before the commencement of the excavation, you know, the applicant to make sure that it's done properly and that there's a reclamation done. And, you know, so that's something that's down the road, too. This is, there's a lot here that needs to be ironed out. We want to try to do it as, you know, expeditiously as possible without multiple public hearings and
I would point out to the chair and to the board that there was a company up your way that was hired by the Conservation Commission that did a big review of the application. But remember, the CONCOM permit that's now been amended permit just got issued like a few weeks ago. That authorized the fill, not the amount of fill, because this board has to approve the amount, but authorized the location of it and landscape buffers and changes in elevation, all those things. So like, you know, there's that company that's called Meridian Associates.
Are you talking about one seventy-five or ninety-six?
One seventy-five, the water, the five-point.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, I don't think.
Yeah.
What was you saying? The company? Yeah, Meridian Associates. And they issued a, you know, fairly extensive report, which is in the public record on the CONCOM side. And I certainly could could send that up to you, too, but because the, you know, all of this, the purpose of forty-five hundred cubic yards of fill that we seek to bring to one seventy-five is to is to raise the elevation of land behind the portions of the seawall that has been authorized to be raised, because on that site, there's about eight hundred and fifty linear feet of seawall, granite seawall built back in the eighteen hundreds. And the CONCOM authorized, we're going to elevate about three hundred and forty linear feet just in the area to protect the buildings. And behind that, we want to bring in material. And then there was a couple of other spots on the site to change the grade behind some other retaining walls that were authorized by the CONCOM. So I'm just pointing out that that was fairly well-vetted, but.
Yeah. What about the existing drainage sites on one seventy-five? It looks as though from the plans that some of those might be altered or covered up or something like that. Is that correct?
That's right. So the drainage was redone for this site as part of the work that was authorized by the CONCOM. And really, the application before this board is really the companion piece. It's because, under the bylaw, I think we were only allowed to bring in three hundred cubic yards on our own. Beyond three hundred cubic yards, we needed approval of the planning board, but we're still want to put it in the same place that we were authorized to put it by the CONCOM. They just didn't have permission to give us all that fill. So, yes, the there was existing drainage on this site from back in the day. We reorganized that drainage. They are locations where there's outlet into the ocean or onto other parts of the site. The CONCOM and DEP, DEP did a review as well. We actually added five storm scepter nine hundred water quality units. And so those are on the plan. I can show you where there are. So, yeah, there was a pretty big upgrade. They accounted for the drainage. They you know, they rerouted some of it to accommodate the proposed proposals that we have for you. And the net result was to upgrade those storm sectors for the site.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I'm clear. Are you saying that the drainage plan as it now exists has already been reviewed and approved by the Conservation Commission?
Correct.
Okay.
And by the way, in DEP, because DEP did a review in the summer, and they're the ones that asked us to upgrade our storm scepters to storm scepter nine hundred units, which we did. Well, yeah, which we agreed to do.
Yeah. Okay. All right, well, that's, you know, that's good information to have.
Yeah.
It was noted that on some of the plans, the existing drainage seemed to be obliterated by fill. In other words, fill would be brought in that would cover the drainage sites of existing drainage. And that, there was a question raised as to that, but if you're saying that was already reviewed and approved, well, that.
Right, right, right. Right, because the fill is not intended to cover the entire site. You know, one of the issues before the Conservation Commission was, you know, minimizing impacts of the environment. And so one of the things that we looked at when we were looking, originally, we wanted to raise the entire elevation of the seawall across the site, eight hundred and fifty feet to elevation fifteen. And ultimately, we determined that, you know, we really only needed three hundred and forty feet. And the other areas will be subject to inundation. And so we had to be able, we had to be able to create a break where the, you know, storm flow could come in, inundate the site and go back into the ocean. But we had to protect those certain areas. We didn't want, you know, you're not going to put fill in an area that's going to get inundated. It'd just get washed into the sea. So when you look at the plan, you'll see, you know, I think you'd understand if I showed you and you know, kind of what the idea is about where that fill is going to go. But it's, it's, you know, I mean, for a five-point-two-acre site, it's fairly modest amount of fill. And it's just to protect those buildings and the up parts that aren't going to be subject to inundation.
Yeah. Well, what, you know, here's the dilemma. We want to move it along, but we don't want to do it prematurely by scheduling a public hearing when we're not ready for one. And I, you know, there's also the question of, because this application is so image-heavy, I mean, there's so many different maps and images and that may need to be referenced, whether it would be preferable if possible to do this in a, you know, in an in-person setting? Just because, you know, here we are on Zoom, you're going to be projecting five or six maps and talking about them and, you know, on everyone's little computer screen. That's a tough call. That's difficult, you know?
Yeah, I mean, happy to come up to Rockport if you folks are having live meetings. So but, but all I would say about that is, you know, obviously, we wanted to accommodate the board, but we do want to, at least I say, open the public hearing. And, you know, if you need, we need to extend that as questions comes up, we can. But we just want to get that process going, because this application, at least of one seventy-five, was filed back on September eighth. So this is one that we really want to.
Yeah, but it was also modified, too, just in fairness, by adding this plan, you know?
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, there are probably going to be more things you want. We'll change some things, you know, or add some things if you're looking for more data. I just, we just wanted to get the process going. And that's why we, you know, filed that application for the parking site plan review as well. But, yeah, so happy to.
Could we, here's a, any other board members pipe in? You have any thoughts on this? But I think, I don't think we're ready for a public hearing on ninety-six, because it's got to be a joint hearing. And there's, we can't schedule one. That would be a waste of everyone's time to do that. And that's clearly the simpler application, anyway. But one seventy-five, you know, I know what you're saying. Have the public get this moving, having a public hearing, but should we get more information first? Schedule the public hearing way out, so we have time to develop the information, so we have it ready for the public hearing? And that's one option. The other option is to schedule it, you know, within the month, which may be, you know, which we could do. Or the other option is just postpone this until we get our consultant on board, have at least an initial consultant review, and then schedule the public hearing. That's another possibility.
Well, I would give you, if I can give you my thought on that, which is, yeah, I just don't know what more information we can give you right now.
No, I don't think you, I don't necessarily think you can give us more based on what you've given us, but that doesn't mean that if we have a review, a consultant reviewing this, there may be questions that are asked that will require you to give more information.
That's true.
You know, so that's, that's what I'm thinking. Not that, no, I think you've, you know, you've done a lot. I mean, I
Mr. Chairman, is it appropriate to ask questions now, or is?
Well, you know, yeah, I guess we can ask questions anytime we want, but one thing I was going to say is, you have, Mr. Angle, you filed a site plan document that has shows where you're going to put the parking. I mean, all that is on one document? That's called a site plan? Is that, is that what happened today?
No, no. So, so the, so I confess that when we filed our application for the site plan review, we were, we used the same site plans that were used before the CONCOM, because those site plans happened to show the parking layouts around the, about the building. So but that is not, that the title pages of those two sheets that show that area are actually called like grading and drainage plan. So what I was proposing to do was to have our engineer just, you know, update the titles on those things. And also, honestly, when I looked at them again this evening, I see no reason why we can't make it one sheet, not two. So, we would, we propose before the next public hearing to get you a properly titled plan that shows the parking layout. But the data is there. It's not titled correct as a site plan for parking.
Well, in your view, all the information that's required by the site plan bylaw is on those, is on that map.
It is.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Drainage, access, parking, yeah. Landscaping.
Yeah. Well, all right, I'm opening it up to any other thoughts on this.
Yeah.
This is really a process question, you know, a process issue right now, like, how do we move forward?
Yeah. So if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Attorney Angley, I've always been curious, you know, the whole aspect of moving fill from up the street to one seventy-five Granite Street. I guess what I'm curious as to is, number one, the type of fill that's going to be moved will not be structural fill. It won't be processed in any respect, other than simply removed and handled by some mechanical means to move it from site A, I'll say, to site B. So with respect to that, that fill and where it's going to be placed on the site at one seventy-five, I'm presuming that fill will not need to be structural. In other words, it won't be placed under any parking service. It won't be used to backfill any drainage structures, that type of thing. I'm just bringing that up now. I mean, I'm not looking for an answer now, but I'm thinking these are some of the questions that would likely come up.
Yeah. And, I mean, those are good questions. And, you know, this is one of the things about this that I struggle with is that, you know, if we didn't get involved ninety-six, we would have just had a, you know, let's just say, you folks, if you granted a permit for one seventy-five, you would have said one seventy-five, and you would have given whatever conditions you needed. If there's under a parking lot, you'd say structural fill. If it's, you know, something else, you'd say something else. So I, I, you know, I can, I think that unfortunately, there's a bit of an unknown about them. What material is at ninety-six? I wish I could answer that for you, but I I can't. And I think this was something that came up a few months ago, when you said, what's, you know, what's there? So I think that's a good question. Because if it's not usable, we wouldn't use it, you know, because we'd still have a permit to bring in forty-five hundred cubic yards, and we would, we would get that all offsite, you know, from the contract. But, yeah. We should know the answer to that question.
Yeah, and some of that goes for also the fill that's coming from outside the town of Rockport. You know, that has the same questions, Harry, and the same issues. And same issues were raised by the DPW officials is, where is it coming from? Is it clean fill? Is it structural fill? What's it going to be used for? These are all, you know, these are all questions. Again, you know, we don't necessarily have to get answers today, but we, you know, there.
Aren't those building issues not zoning?
What?
Those are building issues, not zoning.
I mean, that, that's true, Peter, in my opinion, though, but we're asked, we're being asked to consider two separate applications in which fill from one site is going to be utilized at another site. We know it's not going to be processed. So it, I mean, conceivably, could there be an approval for one seventy-five and a declination for the other site? That's possible.
Well, what if the fill was being brought in, what if contaminated fill? And I'm not saying this is the case at all. Well, let's just say hypothetically, what if contaminated fill was being brought in for one seventy-five? You don't think the the planning board would have anything to say about that, Peter?
No, the specifications for the fill would be specified in the bid and and it would be part of the building, Inspector.
Yeah, it'd always be, had to be clean fill, that's for sure. Can't bring.
Yeah.
I think the only thing that ninety-six provides is an opportunity to take some fill and only travel a half a mile through town with it instead of all these trucks traveling from fifty miles away and going through the entire town.
Yeah. And one of the other comments, and this is one of the, what was raised was the truck size, like, what seemed to be quite small and which would mean if this truck were going to be used for, you know, multiple trips, it's going to be a bazillion trips, because it's like a one-ton truck for this fill. The five hundred, I think, was listed in your comments, Mr. Angley. So that's a, that's a very small truck, which would be many, many trips. But, you know, again, these are, these are things that we're not addressing tonight. It would just be kind of crazy to try to do that. So I would say, let's move forward. Let's get our consultant. Let's get going. Let's give you a list of questions and concerns that I'm sure you could answer them. And let's schedule the public hearing at that time. Doesn't that make more sense to you? Because one way or another, it's all these questions are going to have to get answered or addressed. So why have a hearing and then?
I, yeah, I suppose, I certainly understand with ninety-six, and I would love to be able to get on a call with with the town administrator to try to set up the process. And because I feel like that requires a lot of coordination with your board and CONCOM and selectmen, which seems a little hard, but, but, yeah, so I get that. But I just feel like, like if we don't at least set a hearing date, you know, if the consultant doesn't get their report in on time, you know, we continue it. I just feel like, without having a date, you know, if this was just a month or two after we filed in September, but given all this time, I really feel like the applicant deserves at least a date that we know the hearing is going to start. And, you know, we're certainly happy and capable of sending information along whenever we get it. You know, there's not going to be a problem unless given you data. That would be my view, which is I'd like to at least be able to say to my client after all these months that we at least opened up the public for us. To my client after all these months that we at least opened up the public process.
Yeah, I, I just want to say that. Our minutes, at least from. February 16th said that. The applicant has requested that both applications be postponed for 175 granite until the March 16th meeting. So. There, much right there that that wasn't us.
No, no, I know, I know.
You know, I know, I know there is time, so. Anybody on the board have thoughts on this? We should probably kind of. Get.
I think it would be good to see how many, how many answers the Meridian.
Report answers.
Yeah, we don't, we're not going to know that now. As we're sitting here.
Right.
So. In, in my mind, it's either schedule a public hearing quite a bit far out. You know, or wait until we've got. Some of these questions for the applicant and to be addressed at a public hearing. And schedule the public hearing when we're ready. With the idea that, you know, these. That this applicant has been. You know, very cooperative, very diligent, very thorough. With submitting their materials, they have no complaints. I don't think anybody has any complaints, but this is a big project. And this site is of tremendous interest to the town. And it unfortunately, because of the site, it. The jurisdiction cuts across. Different, you know, agencies and boards, so it makes it that much more complicated. But I'm sure Mr. Angley and Ms. Gustavo have the capabilities of dealing with that. So anyway, and do I hear a motion? For, for when and if to schedule a public hearing? Or any discussion?
I'll make the motion to schedule a public hearing. For the 175 Granite Street. Application.
Okay, the, the key is when, Harry?
And, 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 and the answer is a bit tricky too, is you've mentioned that you may want to meet in person. I'll be aware of April.
Well, actually I was thinking beyond that.
So if you want, if you're looking to. For further clarity on that, then I, my motion would state that, that would, we would make, the motion is, is made to make. To schedule a, a public hearing. The first Thursday of May.
May 4th.
May 4th.
Any seconds?
Jason, I would just ask. Discuss this.
Well, there's no second, so there's no point in discussing.
Okay.
If there's a second, then we can discuss it. But there's no second, so does anybody have an alternative motion about. A, a waiting scheduling the public hearing until we've. Retained a consultant and. Had questions that we want to be addressed at the public hearing.
Yeah, I think the consultant might be the pacing item here.
Might be the what?
The pacing item in terms of availability and so on.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask is how, how long does it typically take to retain somebody with the town system and. Get things going, because the other alternative would be to have a, an initial. Public meeting that. That just starts the process off, lets people ask questions and then have a second one. Once the consultant has weighed in and. Done their work.
Isn't it the owner's?
In my view, the consultant. Will answer many questions and actually might even expedite. And focus the questions that we have. To certain topics, because right now we, you know. We don't know enough to know, at least I don't. So I, I would. I would propose that we. We make a motion tonight to hire a consultant to have, you know, to require the applicant to. Fund an escrow account to pay the consultant. And to look for our. Next meeting. On this to be. Today is March, I think our next meeting to be in April. And only to see, you know, at that point where we are, when, and. When we're ready to schedule a public hearing, we could end up in exactly the same place. As Harry has proposed, which is in May, but at least get, get our consultant on board first.
Harry, can you participate by Zoom during May?
I can.
I'm sorry, during April, rather.
I can.
Okay, so. That won't hold us up.
Yeah, I don't think so. So that, that would be what I would propose. Because I think we're not going to delay anything. Hold on. Unless we're doing something illegal. Just what, hold your comments. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
If you've made a motion, I can second that for discussion.
I'm, I'm making that as a suggestion. Hire, hire the motion to hire the consultant. Authorize that tonight. Schedule another meeting on this, a status meeting. Sooner than later, next month. And with the idea to. Schedule a public hearing sometime in May, after we've had our consultant review. Angley, did you want to address that, that aspect only?
Actually, my only issue was, I think, Mr. Corstland had said. To have a hearing on 175, I just wanted to make sure that we're going to do that, that it's. On both the special permit site plan review under section 13 and the parking under section 10, that they both be done together.
Yeah, no, this will be, this will be on both. There's no point in doing. You know, one and the other, they're, they're tied together. So anyway, that's, that's the motion I'm making.
I will second that.
Good. Motion seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
You said sometime in May, so we can do it.
I, I'm saying schedule. This matter to be on. 175. To be on our agenda for. Either the April. Six meeting or the April 20th meeting to evaluate where we are at that point and if. And then to likely schedule the public hearing for May.
So the consultant would only be 175 and then the hearing would be 175 and 96. Is that what you're thinking?
Well, the.
Two 175s, right?
Yeah, we can't do 96 and 175 because 96 is a joint hearing with the Board of Selectment and the Con.
Okay.
We don't, you know, we don't have any control of their calendars.
Yeah, okay.
I'd be happy to email up to the board a copy of the Meridian report from February of 2022. I don't know whether they do. Kind of land, you know, planning board consulting work, whether they're just. You know, wetlands or.
Yeah, well, that would be, that would be really helpful to have, even if they're not the consultant, at least we'd have their report.
Yeah.
You know, the more information that we have. To give to our consultant, so that he's not, he or she isn't reinventing the wheel, the better. No desire to. Have. Things gone over again that have already been, you know, addressed and resolved. No point.
Is this the Meridian, Meridian Consulting out of Amesbury, Mass?
It, I just had the report up. They are out of. They're out of Beverly. Least in, in, in last, in the early 2022, a year ago, they were out of Beverly, called Meridian Associates.
Okay, maybe different. And, and they were contracted by the developer?
Nope, they were contracted by the Conservation Commission and paid by the developer.
So there would be no conflict?
No.
Oh, they were just hired by. All right, well, so let's, there's a motion and a second. So a motion would be to have this application scheduled. For a status conference on April 20th. And for the potential of scheduling a public hearing for the following month in May. That's one, that would be this motion.
We had a second. We've already had a second.
We had a second, so let's do a vote. Moving along, Peter.
All right.
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, Harry.
Hi.
Okay, motion's carried. So that's. Takes care of one motion. The second motion will be. To authorize the planning board to retain the services of an outside consultant. And at the same time, establish an escrow interest bearing account to be funded by the applicant. Initially in the amount of 10, I would propose $10,000 to assist the planning board in its review. Of the. Two pending special permit. Two pending special permits. With site plan review and site plan review of the applications submitted by Yankee Clipper and the Landing Group.
I'm sorry, so for both, both of the.
Yeah, the app, the, the consultant will review both, but. You know. They're not going to have to come up at the same time, but might as well. I mean, you know, get them, get them both reviewed and. Get the comments on both. So that would be.
Meridian is a full tilt civil engineer and landscape.
Yeah, I mean, and you know, I will definitely, I mean, I've already had some names thrown out. By DPW and. Once we go forward with this, we'll make a decision. And they'll, their name will be raised too, you know.
Does MAPC have a list of consultants?
No, I don't think we need to go there.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want a second?
I need, I would like a second, please.
A second. The motion.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? A roll call vote, Peter?
Hi.
Um, hi. Harry. And. I'll vote in favor. So that motion's carried and. You want to talk about that, Mr. Angley, tomorrow? Just the mechanics of it, we can do that.
Yeah, a couple, yeah, a couple of things. Well, one is that I certainly. I, I, with all due respect, I think you get more traction with the town administrator than our office does, so. I think in terms of, of trying to schedule that joint. Hearing and even just what the selectmen want for a file. I really want to get that in. So any assistance that you folks can provide would be appreciated. So I know that.
I'll do my best to make sure that, that that gets, that, that meeting gets moved forward. I, I understand it's very cumbersome. To try to have a meeting with three different boards and. And, yeah. And the, the town administrator is certainly aware of it. We discussed it today. And, you know, we discussed how we're going to handle this. Because, you know, he's got the. The select board end of it, and we also had a representative from the Conservation Commission there too, so.
Oh, good.
We're going to move forward with that.
That, that's great, because I, you know, perhaps the number one thing for us is just what do we file? And maybe, and we, I think I would, I was saying to myself earlier today, I think we'll just put together something. Maybe there is no form and we'll just kind of submit what we submitted to the plane.
You know, you could do it, you could do it by a kind of a letter application or something. We don't, we certainly don't have a form for that. So, I mean, we have our, we have our application form, which. You know, for, for earth removal, requires some modification. That might be enough.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get that in. I think we'll get that up to the.
Yeah, just send it in, say, look, this is what we have, and I don't think anybody's going to ask anything. Beyond what's asked in that application, really.
Yeah. May I ask one other question? Because I know I'm going to get asked, asked by my client, which is, is the $10,000 figure, is that some, is that typical for you? For you folks? Is that?
Not typical. Did, did, do you want it to be more?
Oh, no, not more at all. A little less would be better, but.
But, well, 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 don't forget, it's in, it will be in an interest bearing account and also whatever isn't used gets returned.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, I only, one, it was, sounded a lot to me and also. You know, it's.
What sounds, what sounds okay to you?
Well, I, I, I mean, I think even for the last time, I think more like 5,000 would be something that I think would be a reason. And if they need more, then we would fund more. It's all like. I'm not. You know, it's not. I'm just trying to be economical with my client's money, but.
Yeah, well, that's appreciated.
And I also don't want to have to tell them $10,000.
Yeah, I, I know.
To be honest.
Well, okay. But it's not, it's not, the money isn't gone, you know, that's all.
No, I know.
All right, does anybody have any thoughts on that? I, I don't have any problem with. We, you know, someone wants to think, gee, you guys are professionals. I haven't done it in a while and, you know. B didn't seem like a ton of money, but you know.
Jason, the number that you arrived at was the same number that I had in my head.
Oh, did you? Okay, well, that, that's.
I, you know, I, I work with builders and developers all the time and, you know, that's. Unfortunately for Mr., you know, Attorney Angley's client, that $10,000 can go fairly quickly for professional services.
But our motion was just to set it aside, not to. Not to answer the cost.
No, no, the motion was just to set it aside in an escrow account.
Yeah.
And that would be used for, to pay our consultant, and there'd be an accounting. As I'm sure they'd want and be entitled to, of, you know, hey, what, what is he billing for here? I, you know, I. I agree. I've been on both sides of this. I've been on Mr. Angley's side and. You know, the applicant's side and, and this, you know, the. Board side and, and you don't want to see a consultant say, oh, whoa, the applicant's paying for this, so I'm just going to build a hole out of it. No. That, that's not fair, you know.
I don't know what the hourly rate is for a consultant like this, but it sounds like about a week's worth of work.
Well, look, it's to me that then.
Yeah.
Another board member who's still employed and actively dealing with real estate matters and thinks that's a. Accurate number or a fair number, I should say, and no one has any real objection on the board. I understand Mr. Angley's position, but I can assure him and his client that. That money isn't, you know, isn't going to be given away for sure, you know. I just, it's just keeping the thing moving. And if we have to stop it because we need more money for the escrow, you know. It's just, why, why put that up there as an impediment to, to getting this thing going forward and, you know. Possibly getting it approved. So. All right, so let's just leave it at that then. Anything else on this application?
Not from the applicant.
Okay. Anybody else on the board? All right, so we'll be on, next time it'll be on will be April 20.
Thank you to all of you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Angley. Appreciate it. Thanks for your good work.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, next item. Okay, we've got. Discussion about March 9th public hearing on zoning bylaws and warrant articles. We've got. Our. Bylaws, which were the subject of a public hearing last week. I think we need to go through each one of them and just to confirm whether or not there are any. Alterations that we want to propose to the bylaws. I did run a question by our council on this. And, you know, how much, when we alter them, what, what's fair game for alteration? In other words, is, can we alter? For the, you got the warrant articles out there already. Can we alter things in the warrant articles that. That weren't altered by the proposed amendments? In other words, let's say we have an underline and a delete, underline to add deletion to. underline to add deletion to delete. We want to say, no, we don't want to delete that anymore. Let's alter that and remove that deletion. That, that's okay. But let's say there's language in that bylaw that um is nothing to do with either one of those and someone wants to alter it by either deleting it or adding language to it, and it wasn't really covered by the notice of the public hearing. We, we could be in trouble with that. So, just, just keep that in mind when we're, we're talking about these things. And then we also have three petitions, citizen petitions that we need, that uh we've been asked to you know, take, take a stance on. So, why don't we, why don't we start with the citizens' petitions just to get those done and out of the way?
At the actual meeting, will they wait for, until we're at that section like we did at the public hearing?
Will they what?
Is there a specific air, time for citizens' petition or should we be allowed to integrate them into the process at the appropriate time?
Well, you know, there's the three that I have here, um one is um the um relating to a chain, a section, open space residential development, which um is not, uh was not the subject of any, you know, proposed amendment from us.
Yeah, you're right.
And then the other. The ADUs, which was not the subject of any proposed amendment for us, from us. And then finally, the the um what the section under conversions, under parking requirements and was not the subject of any proposed amendment by us. So, these are all kind of standalone you know, amendments. And um yeah, why, why don't we cover, why don't we start with the ADU uh petition, which is increasing the minimum lease period from six months to one to 12 contiguous months in, in the bylaw. And the history of this is that we had a bylaw, May of 2022, we had a public hearing on it. We actually at the public, after the public hearing, increased the minimum lease period from three months to six months. Um, that bylaw passed um at town meeting and now there's an amendment which hasn't been subject to a public hearing real, well, actually, no, that's true. We, we did discuss it at on May ninth to increase the, I'm sorry, March ninth, we did to increase that six months period to a 12 month period. That's, so we need to, do we have a position on this and is it a position supporting this position? Opposing this petition or taking no position on the petition?
Which I guess. Mr. Chairman, we have already acted on this, the equivalent of it in a previous meeting. We uh, we moved and uh, and voted to make this exact change.
Yeah.
And so, I think since what we had asked to be on the warrant does not appear, this is a substitute for it. Then we should just report favorably.
Well, when you say substitute, just to clarify, was this petition uh existent when you made your motion?
I don't think so, but uh.
I don't believe it was.
I don't think it'd been filed, but I, I had suspicion that it might not get on the ballot, so I confess to having been a party to signing this.
Well, we were speculating. I think we were speculating at the time that it was, it had to be done as a citizen, as a petition at the meeting.
Okay, so, and I'm not, believe me, I'm not, I don't take any petition on this. I'm just trying to clarify what was done since I wasn't here at that meeting, but at that time, then it was, it was just kind of an idea that you were asking whether the board would be in favor of lengthening the ADU period from six months to a year, but at that time, it was a, it was kind of a, a concept, but it wasn't a petition that was being voted on by the board?
I believe what we vote, we can go back and check the minutes now that we have them, but I think what we voted to do was to request that this be on the warrant as a planning board article.
Okay. And, and what was the vote?
Three to one.
Any other comments on this?
I'm still in favor. Um, uh, I mean, I, I, I can voice my opinion. But I think we need to go back to the minutes and uh make sure that uh you know, it's nothing more than a moral position on a, on a notion.
Do, do you, do you object, Tom, to having a, a vote on this particular um petition, since that's what we're gonna be asked um at the town meeting? What's our position on this particular citizens' petition?
Yeah, I think we need to vote on it, but I think it needs to be in light of having already approved an identical thing at a previous meeting.
Yeah.
And we'd have to explain the difference if it comes out differently.
Well, if it came out differently, but I, I mean, you, there were three of you who voted for this at the uh last meeting, so assuming that all three of you vote for it again, then it's not gonna change the outcome.
Right, right, I'd still be voting for it.
Yeah, so I, I tell you, my, my only concern, and I, I don't have I, I don't say it's bad to increase it to 12 months um at all. Um, it may be a good thing from six. Uh, I know we did talk about it quite a bit uh back in uh 2022. It was the subject of a lot of discussion then. Somehow we landed at six months then, but is that it's um you know, I don't know if it's been fully vetted. That was my only concern. So, since I didn't vote um on this at the last time, I'm not gonna vote now. I'm just gonna abstain and let the um just call the, call a roll call vote on this petition. Cause I don't feel like it's, you know, what's the point? As far as I'm concerned, you guys have already voted and, you know, what I think really doesn't matter, one way or another. So.
Well, I, I think, I think that we can actually well, as a board or individually stand up and speak for or against it at.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. Um, that's anyone's prerogative. I'm just always concerned about the law of unintended consequences.
That's exactly right.
You do things that haven't been fully vetted, you end up with a, you know.
Bad outcome.
Dance that you don't anticipate, but which does happen, but anyway. All right, why don't we take a vote on this? This is easy one, I think. Um.
Hi.
I'd make a motion to, uh, motion to support the citizens' petition that uh proposed extending the minimum term of an ADU from six months to 12 months.
You want to so moved on that? Or did you move?
I just moved.
I will second it.
Okay, seconded. All in favor? Um.
Hi.
Peter.
Hi.
Bob.
Hi.
Harry.
Nay.
And I'll abstain. Carrie, three to one. Your next citizens' petition is the um this is the one um to see if the town would vote to delete from the open space residential development subdivision E dimension requirements subsection four, infrastructure reading to minimize environmental impacts where practicable residential units will have shared or clustered septic systems. That's been proposed to be deleted. So, any position on that?
Well, I feel it's uh essential to this, that kind of development that there'd be more flexibility in how the septic systems work. I mean, the whole point of it is to be able to move buildings nearer each other and open other spaces.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with Peter on that count. I think that that's the, 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 the essence of an open space subdivision that you're going to essentially place improvements on one section in order to preserve the natural scenery, if you will, of the, the balance of the site. Uh, the request, you know, the, the uh, the ordinance to allow for shared systems is, is consistent with the state, state's position in this matter. As I understand it.
Yeah. Yeah, this is um I, I don't, this is consistent with Title V. I mean, Title V expressly authorizes cluster developments and recognizes them and expressly authorizes shared um septic systems uh under, you know, with certain guidelines which would have to be followed in any event by um, by anybody with an open space residential development. And that's you know, this is, this is, this is not something that we just made up. This has been studied, analyzed and codified by the Massachusetts Department of Health. So, it would make sense to have this for you know, a shared system in the town of Rockport. I don't know why, why that would be why Rockport would be, want to be exempt from this or need to be. And it would, as Peter mentioned, it would, uh, you know, could affect the uh, the goals of a um open space residential development. Doesn't mean you have to do it. It just means, you know, where it's practical to do, that it should be done. And where it isn't, it shouldn't be done. Pretty straightforward. All right, anybody else have any?
I, I think I heard the proponent of this state one time that this contradicts some prohibition against moving your sewage for disposal on someone else's property. That may have been a misunderstanding of the of the other regulations.
Well, typically, these types of systems are gonna be placed on common land.
Yeah, generally, that's where they go. They don't go on one person's property to other, but even if they do, the, the uh, the regulations of the Department of Health say that as long as the, the per, all persons using the system have full and complete access to the system for maintenance and repair, that doesn't even matter. But as Harry pointed out, usually these systems are, are not placed on any individual property, but are placed in a common area unless, and um, you know, managed by an HOA and they have five hookups to it or something. So, each house doesn't have to have a wasteful individual septic system. I mean, that's, that's what's called conservation.
That's what's called common sense.
Yeah, so. Okay. Roll, uh, anybody have a motion on this particular proposal?
Are we asking to uh support or not support or?
Support or not support or take no position?
Uh, move to not support.
Okay.
I second.
Seconded by Bob. Roll call vote. Um.
Hi.
Peter.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
Bob.
Hi.
And I'll vote also to um not support it or to oppose this uh proposed amendment. And the last one is um is the uh, another one that um had to be the parking requirements. It's a petition to delete um the parking requirement subsection C conversions um says the sentence reads, any in hotel business and industrial building existing on July one, nineteen seventy-five, if not externally enlarged, it's exempted and not required to comply with the provisions of section five A and five B. This is tucked in in the parking uh section.
So, this sounds like it's eliminating ends from being grandfathered for before nineteen seventy-five, right?
Yeah, there exist, I don't understand July one of nineteen seventy-five. What is the significance of that date?
Must be in there. I'm just assuming that it's the pre-existing zoning ordinance uh date, but I don't know for sure if that's correct.
Uh, the existing. Something happened in nineteen seventy-five that whoever wrote this thought it was so significant that it's gonna be a date by which the grandfathering um, you know, takes effect. And it seemed significant when this was adopted, but right now, nineteen seventy-five? I have no idea.
Um, well, in, back in nineteen seventy-five, wasn't the Cape and Tool project still going?
Yeah, it was operating, but of course, it's, it stopped in what, the early eighties, I think, so what now, now, now you can say, well, we had, even though it's not going anymore, that you know, we still have the right to the same number of parking spaces because that's what we had in nineteen seventy-five? That's.
And yet, this ordinance, if approved, would be applicable throughout Rockport.
Yeah.
Right, if they pulled a building permit for renovations, they would have to bring parking up to code, which I want assumes is only difficult if it's more parking rather than less parking.
So, it goes back to something that Jason said earlier, referring to the law of unintended consequences. Or maybe, in this case, there are intended consequences. I don't know.
Well, you know, this is one problem of not having a um, you know, full airing of something like this and developing it and having it come, pop up in a, a um petition. And I don't, I don't believe we had anybody, any proponent of this provision as at, at our hearing, talk about why it was there and why it's needed. So, it's kind of like, okay, well, what are we doing? I, I don't know whether this is good or bad and my, my you would, I wouldn't take any position on this. You know, with it. Cause I, I don't have enough information to take any position on. It's an odd provision, but there might be a reason for it.
There's always a reason.
Yeah.
I move that the planning board take no position on this uh, on this article.
I second it.
Okay, seconded. Discussion on the motion.
Let me just, let me just rephrase that, please.
Okay.
I moved the planning board take no position on this citizens' petition.
Second, second.
Seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Tom.
I, I for no position, I guess.
I for abstaining on rec, making any recommendation. Yeah, no, taking no position. That's our position is no.
Right.
Is, is I for no position the same as abstaining on a position?
Well, I is, we're taking, the planning board takes, the motion is the planning board takes no position.
I.
Are you in favor of that or not? Are you in favor of that or not?
Hi.
Harry?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
I'll vote in favor. I'll vote and I too. So the planning board is taking no position on this citizen's petition. Okay. Now let's talk about the various articles that we have. I think let's start with Article J. That's where we left off. So Article J has a number of provisions that I think we agreed would, we'd want to alter basically to eliminate proposed changes. In other words, these are changes that were proposed in Article J. And, but we believe that they should be, in other words, those changes should be rescinded. In other words, those proposed changes should not go forward as part of Article J. And one of them is the provision under a schedule of area and dimensions. Accessory buildings or structures. I don't really know it's there, but it's a minimum lot dimensions, area square feet, two family. And then it has resident in the R district. It goes from 15,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet. And that I would propose that we move to eliminate that change and leave the, that provision as is, which would be the 15,000 square feet in the R district. And as we discussed earlier, this change really does not get us anywhere toward the multifamily housing requirement of the, under the zoning act. That's for us because we're an MBTA station. It doesn't do that. It, it doesn't achieve that. And there's really no reason to, to do this. Because we're going to have plenty of multifamily housing discussed in the not too distant future. So anybody have any thoughts about whether you want to leave this, to remove this change and leave this particular provision as is?
Did, did we ever get a count of how many lots are between 10,000 and 7,500? In the R zone?
You mean actually?
Account, yeah.
In reality, I don't, I don't know if we did.
Where, that's, that's the next step on looking at those maps, I think, Tom. But I, I, I was giving the DPW GIS department quite a lot of work already. And I didn't want to involve them in counting, counting the parcels yet. But it's something that's, I think, pretty easy to do as a second step here.
So it's a question of materiality. How, if there are just a couple of these, then it's not a big deal. If there's a lot of them, then that's a bigger deal.
I see a hand from Bob, Robert Craig.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Bob, could you just send me an email with the exact wording as you have before? They've been great in the past with the exact wording of the number of lots. I'm pretty sure it's already information we have based on the other stuff we've put together.
I think at the same time, we'd like to know the, not just the 7,500 and the tens, but the tens and the 15. I think what we're really doubting is whether anybody could ever do a two-family who happen to have half a lot available to them to add to their lot. It's probably very, very few in our, that are 15 and could do a two-family. By the way, just to explain a little further on why this doesn't help with the multifamily housing requirement is because the Department of Housing and Community Development has stated that an accessory dwelling unit, even if it's internal, cannot constitute the third unit that's required of a multifamily dwelling. So therefore doing, if you had two, if you had a two-family dwelling that was on 10,000 square feet, you couldn't add an internal ADU to make that what would be a multifamily or three-family dwelling. So it, this provision, and this is where MAPC, I think, you know, they were, they anticipated incorrectly and you know, have basically acknowledged that without the possibility of an ADU, this section does not help in terms of multifamily dwelling, reaching that capacity in, in the zoning. So that's why it's it could be, you know, basically deleted and go back to the original zone. So that's what's being proposed now. Does anybody have any, you know, want to not do that and continue with it or, you know?
Yeah, if I, if I had to, if I had to guess, looking at my map, the map I showed at these public hearings and also at the affordable housing thing, just suggests that the, the parcels that are in purple, which are greater than 15,000 square feet, probably just, just from a visual point of view, looks like it's about, it's less than 20% of the R district, for example. So, and it's scattered all over the place. So it's, it's not a contiguous large area.
I was in favor of the change, having nothing to do with satisfying MBTA or housing choices, things like that, but more along the lines of approving ADUs because they're across town, different people have them. And this would spread it out from just a half mile around the train station to, any individual could create a two-family. And it would increase the housing stock. There'd be smaller units and maybe inherently less, they'd be inherently more affordable. Not the defined affordable or any of that, but just increase the housing stock of.
I, I hear.
And it's the way it is already in general and in downtown, where the minimum lot size for one family and the minimum lot size for a two-family are the same. It suddenly hops up for our. Anybody have any other thoughts on that?
Well, I think it could be a litmus test to see just how, now that the town has had three or four different sessions on educational sort of sessions on the MBTA and has a little bit better sense of what's going on. And we'll have a larger group at this Springtown meeting. Maybe it is a good way to gauge this kind of stepping stone to see where we are, even though it doesn't, like Peter was saying, it doesn't really get us where we need to be, but it, it's certainly a more practical step. I mean, a lot, a lot of the units in the R district and the downtown district obviously are fifth, a fifth of an acre, maybe a quarter of an acre. That's, that's, that's really the average size in the, in those areas. And this would allow that to, to happen. And people just might be stoutly against it or not, but whatever we end up doing, comply with the MBTA, we're going to be looking at an overlay district that does a similar thing in terms of density. Now, now people, maybe at least a couple hundred people have a better idea what 15 dwelling units per acre looks like from the examples that Peter and, and I showed.
Tom?
We have other changes in, in this article besides this, right?
Just one.
And we're not changing the other.
Other, other changes that we want to alter now or just other?
Other revisions in, in Article J.
Yeah, just the other, the only other, there are two. One is the to remove the building, you know, one of them is the building code provision that, that retail and commercial uses to remove that because that's really a building code issue. And I think the other one is the under a half-story definition. That's, I, that's at the end of the scheduled area and dimensions with a pitch of not less than four and 12. You see that? That's an addition. And then and then the last one, which really shouldn't be, is, is just a plain error is at the last page, accessory building yard dimensions, minimum required yard dimensions may be reduced for accessory buildings. And then the language that should be deleted is issued by the planning board. It should be the Board of Appeals because this is for accessory buildings other than residential buildings. The planning board already has the jurisdiction over yard dimensions for accessory dwelling units. This is for all other accessory buildings other than accessory dwelling units. And that properly belongs and continues to belong with the zoning board of appeals. This, this change was really inadvertent. We, I don't think we want to start looking at, you know, people's applications for special permits for sheds or other stru, or pool houses or other structures that might not meet the setback. That, that's the zoning board of appeals. It'd stay with the zoning board of appeals. So those are the only other proposed changes. And that one should, we should alter that. But then, you know, then there's this one. And my position is, look, we've got a lot of work ahead of us on the, on the multifamily. We, we want to do it right. We want to have more education sessions. I don't feel comfortable with going forward with this now. I think we're, we're going to be asking, you know, for rezoning that would allow a capacity of 657 multifamily units. So we have a lot of work to do to get to an explanation of how we're going to do that. I, I'm afraid that doing this now is, is going to be a, it's going to be a heavy lift. Because I don't think we've done enough education.
I agree. It's a heavy lift and we don't have the data to support it yet. And it might imperil the passage of the overall article where we do want the other changes. So what's, at, at least at this stage, let's, let's not try to make that, that change in the area.
Okay, so let's, one other thing I just want to ask before we vote on this, the half-story provision. Can, can one of you architects explain that?
Each one of you tell us half of the story.
I, I know, yes. I know you had addressed this earlier, Peter. Yeah, it was, it was a paragraph that was much longer. It's no different than before. It's just was intended to be clearer. Okay, doesn't really, what you're saying is substantively, it stays, it doesn't change. Just to clarify. Right. You know, it used to be in different parts. Part of it was a, a note. And part of it was in definitions. That's right. That's right. We put it together in one place. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so is there a motion to alter the proposed change for two-family houses by eliminating the proposed increase of the square footage in an R district from 10,000, I'm sorry, and reducing it from 15,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet? Is there a motion to delete, eliminate that change?
Some of.
Okay. Tom, seconded?
Second.
Peter seconds, roll call vote. Tom?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Bob?
I use a thumbs up.
You can't speak?
Oh, okay. I'm unmuted now. I muted myself, but I can't unmute myself.
Okay, there you are. You're good.
Aye.
Okay, Harry?
Aye.
All right. And then the last proposed alteration is to the language changing in that accessory building yard dimension, the language changing the special permit authority in that provision, provision from the zoning board of appeals to the planning board to eliminate that change and having that authority stay with the plan, the zoning board for all accessory buildings that are not dwellings. Motion to make that change?
Don't move.
Peter? Move, seconded?
I second.
Roll call vote, Tom?
Is there any discussion on this? Well, we just, we just don't, we just don't think we need to do this because it's less important than the dwelling unit setbacks.
Well, we've already done it with the dwelling units. And I don't think we intended to divest the ZBA of all, of all its jurisdiction over all accessory buildings and give it to us. I don't really, I don't really want it, you know? I don't, you know, I don't know who does, but yeah, so. Was that, did we have a motion and second on this? I forget.
Yes.
Okay, so Tom, you were going to vote?
Aye.
Okay, Bob?
Aye.
And Harry?
Aye.
And I'll vote in favor. Okay, let's go to Article K. This is the parking article. You know, this got fair amount of discussion at our public hearing. It was concerned by people who lived in the, you know, more densely populated areas of town that this is going to deprive them of yet more parking. That's, that was their concern. I think the focus was on residential and, you know, not so much on commercial. There were some concern about not providing for employee parking, but I think that that's just, you know, as we said, you just can't condition parking on the number of employees at the time of an application because that number can either go up or down. And it's just makes far more sense. And it's far more of a better practice to simply determine commercial parking based on the square footage of the particular use. But that's where we are. You know, does anybody have any proposed alterations to this particular Article K? Are we going to use the same show? I'll take off all that stuff about zoning or co, zoning districts and things like that, but use the same slide? Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Okay, so I think the two things that came up during this, the session where someone was saying the environmental argument wasn't good because you can get some permeable driveways. Which I think is only partly true and not necessarily less expensive. I think the thing that was pointed out that we didn't have on here was if we're trying to make housing more affordable, besides not making more spaces, we don't need to make more expensive spaces. Well, the other thing that I think brought up at the meeting was that, well, they're not going to do anything with all that extra space anyway. But if it's not parking, but I, I don't think that's true because we've got any parking of that magnitude is going to be subject to site plan review and certainly can be required to have green areas. Or if it comes to it, you know, surface water discharge from the parking area can be better go into the into the green areas and the permeability, there is permeable asphalt, that's true. But like you said, A, it's more expensive. And B, and I learned this because we have some in a part of our driveway is that if you don't maintain it by like vacuuming it every year, it be. Every year, it becomes impermeable. Because the dust and debris. Gets caught in the.
Yeah.
The asphalt and it no longer now shed absorbs the water, it sheds the water like other. Asphalt does, so I don't know if that's.
And I I have riverstone. And it costs a fortune to have a landscape guy rake it back onto the driveway after. One plow. And every two years you have to buy more.
So, you know, you know, there are other good things about this parking. Bylaw that are good and. And. I don't know, what do you guys think? Want to just leave it as is and? Go for it or, you know, as is and? Let the voters decide.
I am always concerned. About making changes just before a public meeting. Which invariably leads to. People being confused and asking more questions and then we. We just run the risk of. You know. Basically losing out on what we're trying to accomplish here.
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
All right, so I move that we leave the language as it relates to this article. As it is.
Yeah, I don't think we need to. Harry, I don't think we need to have a motion if we're not.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Making any alterations, you just leave it. And I think. Article L was. Well, pretty much. What we what we agreed on. The. I know there was an objection. To the removal of the. Language on sites sewage system service than one lot is prohibited. That's language that we. Want to deleted. It stands to reason to delete that. With the open space residential development language. In the the other in another section of the bylaw.
You think the citizens petition will come before this or after?
I don't know what they're doing, I I would. I don't know.
This is moot, might be moot.
Could be moved. Yeah. Could be, but. Hopefully people will recognize there is a place for. Shared systems in this world. You know? Okay, well, anyway, that that was the only thing that. I observed. And. Let's see, let's keep on going because right now I think we have one. And M is the Water Supply Protection Overlay District. And that was the the one. Request that we that we got from. Eric Hutchins was to eliminate the language that. Said that. The. If the Water Supply Protection Overlay District is. Cuts across. A particular lot. Then the. And the entire lot will be subject. To the Water Supply Protection Overlay District. And I was mentioning that. That that is language that was. Lifted, I wouldn't say lifted because that's a kind of a pejorative term, but. It was. Adopted from the draft model. Water Supply Protection Overlay District. Language of the DEP. So. You know, there you go.
I don't think there's a hard and fast rule on this kind of thing in terms of. How it's organized, you know, some districts like. Historic districts have almost always famously followed property lines. Rather than just drawing a line a hundred feet back down two sides of Main Street. But other things like FEMA and wetlands have often just drawn the lines that mean something. And then the rest of your property may or may not have requirements because part of it's in that zone. I don't think it's an unusual situation. To do it this way.
Well, it isn't unusual and there there are different different zones and areas. Where the where the districts don't necessarily follow property lines. And I've I've been in situations where. Where property owners have to. Kind of ascertain whether. Their property is in one district or another district or half in one district, half in another district. It it does happen. So. You know, and. I don't know, I just think if hey, if it's if the DEP with all of its expertise and. Time doing this has recommended that this. Has in its model bylaw that this be language, I don't really know enough to say, well, no, take it out because I don't think it's good.
I think the objections I've heard are that the map don't reflect doesn't reflect the text, the text saying that the whole parcel should be included, but the map itself. Doesn't, and I don't know if that's. Significant or what it would take to make the map include the whole parcel.
Well, you you'd have to then do the lines of the district by the by parcel and.
Yeah.
As as Peter said, there are a lot of districts where they're not.
No.
Parcels are not the defining feature of the map, they don't go. You say, okay, well, let's go around this parcel and let's go this way on this parcel, they don't. A lot of zoning maps don't. You know, you don't. You you don't necessarily know where. You know, I'm just dealing with a parcel where. Half the parcels in one town and half the parcels in another town in the earth. And they all have different zoning, you know, well. But the zoning map, that's the way the zoning map is, you know? It's just, it happens. So. Yeah, if someone wants to make an amendment to try to, you know, to take it out, then I guess that's a prerogative. It would be a shame to. Defeat the entire bylaw for one. Provision like that. Because the rest of it's well needed. And. That's my thought.
Yeah, I I just I just want to be clear on one thing here, when when I was listening. To Eric. His arguments seem to be. Look, if if there was a corner of a forty acre parcel. For example. That's that's in in that. Zone. Are you going to disqualify the entire parcel? Potentially?
Okay, are you going to say that the entire parcel is in the zone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I believe that's where Eric was coming from.
Yeah.
We'll hear shortly.
What?
We'll hear shortly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, why why don't we? Why don't we put these this on hold and? See what? Kind of do things out of order, maybe have our comment period before we. Come back, come back to this after the comment period.
Okay, bye.
Okay.
That's people might have something to say, okay, we're now what Article N are we? Where we have a change proposed?
It's not exactly a change, it's a correction because the warrant as written is not correct. Doesn't portray with the existing.
Yeah.
Bylaws text.
I asked I asked about that, Tom, because that came up. And actually another place too. Where I don't know how it happened, but. It was in the enforcement provision where. The bylaw as it is now in the book has. Says two years in connection with a special permit. You know, you have to do whatever within two years and the Warren article. Says three years. It wasn't one of our changes, it just said that and and what's going to happen is. Whatever the whatever the Warren article says isn't going to be. Is not going to change. The existing bylaw unless it's one of the specifically denoted changes. In the Warren article, in other words, if there's a typo in somewhere else in the Warren article. That wasn't part of our. Proposed change, then that change is gonna. Is not going to happen, you're going to go back to what's in the. You know, the bylaw that was duly adopted. So. Take that into consideration.
I I don't know how Article N can pass if it incorrectly states. The existing text and the change.
Well, which provision are you referring to?
This paragraph three. I had a slide on this at the. At the hearing.
You mean the text where it says the mean.
Yeah.
Mean versus highest.
That's the one. Can I screen share, maybe this will be a easier way to.
Yeah, well, let's look, what is the existing bylaws?
I can show you if you let me screen share. Thank you, Rob. So the bottom. Paragraph, if you just take what's. Stricken out as what's existing. And what's underlined is not existing, that's the current bylaw.
Okay, so the bottom one says, provide that all new construction within zone VE be located landward. Of the reach of.
Mean high tide.
Mean. Where's the high? It is deleted, but the highest annual tide is added.
Yeah.
So there's there needs to be a crossed outward high. I can, I'm fixing this show as we go.
I think the way I sent it to you, Peter, it didn't have underlying high and you made the whole. Whole word underlined.
This provision is causing more problems and.
Okay, so now I have mean high crossed out and then the highest annual tide.
So. Let me see if I can find it in. By law here.
The problem here a little bit is that there's three things, there's the original one. There's the one we attempted to get in, but had that weird thing where one of the clauses duplicated. And so then Tom went back to the last one, which is an edit of the original.
Yeah, let's go back to the original.
This, this is the original.
Okay, provide, let's have page forty seven. Okay, provide that all new construction within zone VE be located landward of the reach of mean high tide. That's what it says.
Yep.
Okay, so that's what you, that's what is there now. And. The by the.
The warrant has this.
Well. Yeah.
Which does not portray the existing. Or the changes, Eric, really.
Here's the question I have, and this is mainly for you, Tom. It seems like this is pretty confused right now. And it will be very hard to explain. Because what we're saying is what's in your booklet isn't exactly what. The language of the bylaw says. And you got to ignore that. You know. Can this wait, you know?
Well, Article N can't pass the way it is because this is an incorrect paragraph.
Yeah.
So you're going to say just no motion on Article?
No, I'm 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 just asking the question whether whether we. Want to straighten this out and come back or?
Come back when? You mean at another meeting, another time?
I thought it went down pretty well at the public hearing. People seem to focus on the, let's replace mean with high. More than the the snafu of, maybe it's because everybody's used to. Spell check repeating things.
And we can straighten out this underlining thing a little better and I think it'll be clear.
Well, I I think what you need to do is show the. I mean. So so basically what's in the booklet. We're telling them that's not really what you're voting on.
Yeah, kind of like our problem with the planning board and the zoning board on this.
Yeah, well, that's when we're just saying, don't do anything, we're, you know, saying, leave it. As is, we're withdrawing the. The amendment because if we do that. To, yeah, it would be.
Oh, we are?
No, no, I'm sorry, we're changing the. Where it.
We're changing the P's to Z's.
We're we're adding, well, let's let's not talk about that, let's talk about this. So I I guess what you need to do, Tom, and. I think we need to run this probably by talk about this with. Now council to show the current. The amended current. And what you want for the amendment.
Which is what he did for the.
This is the amended, this is the amended current, except the H I G H should not be underlined.
So then it has to get to the voters. So they can see. That in a in a way that will, you know, be obviously make sense.
Well, it'll be this slide. What do you mean it's got to be in the book?
Do I mean it's got to be in the book?
Cause it does.
Can you vote on something that's in a slide and not in the book?
I guess if you can vote on something that people on the floor propose.
Yeah. So how how would it, how would you want it to show up?
Well, wait, you're doing this in Article J, I mean, you're changing what's in the book.
Well, yeah, but the only reason, the only way we're changing is taking. Changing the authority, what governing authority from the planning board back to the ZBA.
Right, it's a smaller change.
Pretty easy to understand. But this is a little bit different, isn't it?
And I think it's pretty straightforward.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I think. If you really focus on the whole point here, which was add the coastal banks and make it the highest annual, not the mean. Just two pretty straightforward things. One thing that's confusing is that it was a weird typo.
Yeah, well, you know, it's fine. If you guys, you know, if you want to do it.
I I just don't know the mechanics of this, is this a floor amendment?
I think we need to discuss this further with.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I just, I don't know the answer to this, I mean, I'm.
Any changes we make, we should do the same everywhere.
Yeah.
So thi- this is a question of whether, how do we do the alteration?
I think it's a friendly motion from us.
Well, maybe that's the case. And if that's if that's all that's required, that's great. All right.
Okay.
And then the red, the other change is the. Eliminating the ability to allow infill. Buildings under the last paragraph and, you know. That's pretty clearly stated and that'll be. Up for debate.
I changed that last line for you, Tom.
Oh, in in a slide back, okay.
Yeah. I'll make a new slide pack.
And I had sent you. The slide thirty four as well with change the last line. About Long Beach.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I meant. As town property, Long Beach is exempt.
Right, so you changed slide thirty four and also thirty six with the underlining thing, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I changed that already.
So the two slides you've changed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I think that's, um, I think that was it.
Don't we go through R and, and things?
No, I, I don't think we had any, uh.
No, no changes.
I don't think we had any changes in there.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that stayed the same. Site plan review is fine. R is fine, yeah, we're good.
And then we pitch all the TOVD stuff, right?
What?
Yeah, we.
Everything.
Not in town meeting, no.
Yeah.
That's, that's just not. So basically, we've got Article J. We've got the, um, the couple of changes there, which we've agreed on. We've got the, um, water supply protection overlay district where we have that one provision that's still kind of an open question. We're going to revisit. And then we've got Tom's uh, the coastal zone provision, which we're going to straighten out.
Good.
Do we delete the citizens petitions? I think they're no longer from our show and the moderator will handle that.
I'm sorry, Peter.
We have those three citizens positions. At the town meeting, we stuck it in our show.
No, we're not, it's not gonna be part of our, our show.
It's not us, right?
Okay, all we're, all we're doing is, um, you know, the, the articles that were, we developed.
Capital letter, articles, gotcha.
And it's only, and it's, yeah, that's it. Okay. Anything else on the bylaws? Cause I'll open, um, uh, I, I know Eric, you made a comment. Uh, anybody else who was?
Toby's guy.
Toby's got a comment for the, I know he's a proponent of one of these, one or more of these petitions. So we'll take those comments now.
Other hand from Toby Arsenian.
Okay. Toby, go ahead.
Thank you, Toby Arsenian ninety five Granite Street. Uh, I guess I object to the format of it, um. You know, uh, apparently, um, you know, a public hearing on citizens uh, petition articles is not required, and certainly you've not provided one, or, uh, uh, now that you voted, I, I'm free to comment. Uh, actually, I don't greatly care in terms of the results because I'm confident of what I, what I'm doing, that, that it's right. Um, and, uh, um, I would point out that with the open space residential design that, uh, you and your consultants, whom you now, uh, wish to disa- disown, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, uh, created that conflict on the, uh, septic systems. Uh, before, there was only the flat out provision, uh, in the zoning that such things were not permitted. So, uh, when you cite conflicts with, uh, state law or anything else, uh, that has been the way it was for many years in the zoning code and legal. Um, now it seems, um, you're going to listen to Eric Hutchins, I hope so. There were two issues on the watershed protection overlay, uh, on the map. Uh, one is that it doesn't reflect what the text says, which is, you know, not what you said in an earlier article where we said we were putting all of the, uh, zoning map, uh, districts on the map, which we've not. Um, so there's that conflict there, but now I guess Eric has taken up my position that the extending the lots as Harry, uh, Coorsland pointed out, you could have forty acres and cross a, a corner of it and include the whole thing. Well, it does, I, I, you know, don't propose to discuss it now, but it's, you know, it's two issues, you know, whether the map, uh, reflects what the text does, um, accomplish, which it doesn't, and then whether it's reasonable to include all those areas. And that would be a matter of opinion. I gather Eric Hutchins has now taken up my position. I'm delighted to hear it.
Um, well, he's, he's taken up your position regarding that one provision from the model. Um, bylaw drafted by the DEP. I think since he was in large part responsible for the map alteration, he doesn't pick up your position on that.
I, I, I don't know. Uh, at this point, it's a matter of indifference. It will be decided uh, at the town meeting. Um, there was something else that, that occurred to me, but, uh, I'm drawing blanks mentally. Um, uh, just in terms of the public, uh, presentation of it and a public hearing, uh, if this pretended to be a public hearing on the, uh, citizens uh, petition articles, I would say it was a fairly, uh, feeble pretense.
Like this, you mean tonight?
Yes.
No, we had a public hearing back, uh, last week.
On your articles, not on.
No, no, your articles were on the screen. They were up there.
No. The, I was never informed of that.
Well, I'm sorry about that, but they were.
You should be, you should be.
No, I shouldn't be. So I'm sorry that, who was supposed to inform you? Yeah. They were.
Yes.
It was advertised and it was on the screen. And.
Were the citizens petition part of what was advertised? They were not.
No, because by the time we got them, we were done, already had it been done. We already run the.
So, so basically there is no public review of the citizen.
And they were, they were on our website.
That doesn't do any good for the public.
Well, look, I'm sorry, you should have gotten them in sooner.
No, I got them in by the date required, and they were stamped at the town clerk's office. There's nothing wrong with what I've done. And there's nothing legally wrong with what you're doing.
And we had them there, we had them at the meeting. I don't need to say anymore. Everyone saw them. They were on our, part of our presentation. You weren't there. Okay, uh, any other comments from anybody else? Eric, did you want to talk about this provision? You want to recognize Eric Hutchins?
There he is, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, yeah, hi, Eric Hutchins, forty five Pools Lane. I'm, I may drop out. I'm on a hotspot at a log cabin on the shores of Moosehead Lake. Um, so it's, it's, I've dropped out twenty times. Anyway, um, as per my, my comment letter, I think you've done great inroads on the watershed protection overlay district uh, upgrade to the map and the language, and I'm fully supportive of it. The, and as, as Harry had explained, you know, my, my driving point more than anything was simply, I question if, if the, um, projection to the public is adequate on the map for the changes. Earlier, you talked about the general district. Gee, does the public know about what you're doing? And you were talking about mapping it, same principle here. Even if you ask me right now, I don't know how many parcels have been impacted or how many acres. That's just the analysis that I think needs to be done and portrayed to the public.
Um. I don't understand what you're saying.
Well, that, the watershed overlay district, which is a line, a big, called a big circle, and it supersedes X number of parcels throughout Rockport. I couldn't tell you, or could anyone on this planning board tell me, is it ten or one hundred? Is it five acres that are impacted or five hundred?
Yeah, but that, does that matter whether, where the lot, the, the lines aren't new. These lines have have never been on the map. That's the problem. They never been.
No, 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 actually, the lines are indeed on the map.
They are, the zones are, the zones are delineated, which they weren't delineated before, or aren't now, actually.
Well, let me, um, let me put it in a different way. Do you think even ninety nine, even one percent of the people who will be affected even know about it? That's kind of my point.
Idea what people know and what they don't know, Eric.
But if they looked at a map, they wouldn't see it. That's my point.
Are, are you talking about, you wouldn't see what?
They wouldn't know that they're in this new district that's being expanded. Cause they would look at the map and they would say, hey, I'm not in it. That's.
I, 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 I'm, I'm losing what your thought is here, just, and I want to get it, is we've got two things going on here. We've got the maps which show the boundary lines of zone one, zone two, zone A and zone B and zone C, correct?
Yes.
Okay, those boundaries were never labeled in the current map. There, there's no legend that says what the boundaries are. In other words, they're just lines on the map. But now we have, we have the legends that, that you helped put on the map to show where those districts are. If you're asking, do people know whether their properties are in the districts or not? Um, maybe they do, maybe they don't. If they've never had any reason to inquire, they wouldn't know necessarily.
Well, what, what, the, the, um, the, the big change that's taken place in the past twenty years is switching to GIS in individual lots by lot line. There is a case to be made that you have all the ability to push a stroke of a keystroke to show all the parcels that you've now added by saying, if you're in it at all, you're all in it. That's the way the SRAA district was created. That was the first district in Rockport that was created about fifteen years ago. The entire SRAA district was the first zoning district in Rockport that was based on lot lines versus just someone drawing up and down a street. And it was better to do it by lots.
A lot, a lot of zoning districts though are not done by lot lines. And, you know, sometimes lots are subdivided and changed and.
I agree.
So I guess my point is now, right now, you, it sounds to me like you're, and correct me if I'm wrong, you support what was done and what's there and what's proposed with one exception, which is the, the provision that says if part of your lots in the water supply protection overlay district, the balance is also in the district. Is that, is that what you're, you're concerned?
Yes, because my cursory review, there are some parcels, this is cursory. So my point is, has the evaluation been done? So hear me out, some parcels, that line goes over five feet over a property line, over a someone's house that has been for all practical purposes outside the district for the past twenty years. The line was there before, it was on the map. So now five foot intersection of their property line, their entire property just became within the watershed overlay district. Unless just say a half acre parcel with a house on it. Those people most likely don't know that, that this part, this is going to do that. There are some other part, let me finish, there are some other. Yeah, there's some other parcels that are over two hundred acres large that this just included. I'm willing to bet they don't, none of them know it. I would rather see just a bylaw, uh, that is, is defendable in court, that's all. And the fact that it doesn't portray it in the map, usually that's when, 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 when a, when a zoning bylaw goes to court, people say, does your map show it? And little, little bit of language in the wording, most people just look at the map. And they, if you looked at the map without the language, you'd never know it. You would say, this is the watershed overlay district, makes sense from a topography map. You got a parcel that's a hundred acres. Oh, I'm not in the watershed overlay, other my corner over there. And then all of a sudden, whoa, I didn't know that language was there buried. So that's the point of making.
I, 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 I get your drift. You're talking about the language that, that makes the balance of a lot in the district if a portion of it's in the district. Is that what you're, that's your objection? This is the language that's, that's in the DEP.
Yes.
Model bylaw that you're saying you don't think is good.
No, what I'm saying is I educated the public and I'm, I'm.
All right, well, look, we, we can.
That's, I don't think.
No, Eric, I'm sorry. This is, this is, this is about one provision in the entire bylaw that you have helped work on.
Yep.
You have helped design the proposed map for. And my understanding is that your concern is one provision which concerns the lot line, that the boundary of the, uh, water supply protection overlay district uh, should not, should only stop where it is and not encompass the entire lot if the rest of the lots out of the district. I, I get that. You know, I just, that's what you're saying.
No, no, Jason, I'm not saying I don't support it. I'm saying it hasn't been projected to the public, hasn't been analyzed. If, can anyone on the planning board?
Look, Eric, forget it. You're telling me two different things. You're saying that you don't support it in your, in your written comments, that you had a problem with it. And now you're saying, no, I don't, but the public has to know about it. Well, you know, we've had how many public hearings where this has been in the, in the bylaw? So do you, I mean, I, for someone to say, well, the people don't know about it. You know, that, I'm sorry, I, I can't. I don't know what to tell you. You know, if, if that's the obje- do you, do you, if you feel you, we should take it out because it's confusing or can have untoward results, I understand that, you know? And I, I would like to think that the rest of the bylaw is workable and much better than, than it is now.
Oh, wait, actually, don't get me wrong. I, I'm not remotely saying, don't move this article. It, it, make that very clear, just for the record. All I'm, all I've, my only suggestion was that one section, everything else, all the modifications, all move forward. This is just an amendment. Take my word for it. Don't, don't, don't confuse that for the record.
No, I'm not confusing it. I, I want to unconfuse it. And it sounds like if it's this one provision, um, and that's why we kind of put this off because I, I don't think that provision is all that important to the rest of what we're trying to achieve here. And if it, if it's going to create confusion in your mind and then I'm fine with, with altering it and just, and just cutting it out. Because it would be a real shame if the rest of the bylaw, which is so much better than what was uh, what's there now, is legal while what's there now isn't, uh, is enforceable while what's there now isn't. Uh, if, if, that should not rise and fall on this one little.
Just the chair, just a question. You know, following up on what Eric is saying, the way to handle this, and maybe Mitch can help us, is, does this sound simply get addressed the way Eric is describing it via a floor amendment? At this stage?
I, I've got to think about that a little bit. Harry, it's a good question. So Jason, when we talk about the others with council, we should just add this to the list to make sure we're getting the uniform response for it.
Yeah, I, I didn't hear Harry's question. I, for some reason, what was the question?
It's, it's, it's about process.
Yeah.
Does, does, does what Eric, what Eric's trying to convey, does this get handled as a floor amendment? At, uh, town meeting? To make his amended.
Yeah, and that, and that would be fine. This is a very long, technical detail provision. And, um, yeah, whatever way we want to do it. Uh, this would be the proverbial tail wagging the dog with this provision. If it, if it created problems. So I'm okay. All right.
Just one procedural comment. I think the amendment, formant would be a majority vote. Whereas the article itself would be a two thirds. So there's a little difference in the sequence.
Where's Bob Bisnick when you need him?
Yeah.
More question for town council, I suppose.
Yep.
Well, we know, we know what the question is, and we'll, we'll talk about it. You know, going forward. And see what we can do.
I'm having a little trouble with this. Uh, I'm looking at my holder code, and it says that the boundaries of the WSPOD do not coincide with property lines. In such instances, the regulation of this section shall apply only to that portion of the lot, the lives within the WSPOD.
Okay.
I'm not reading anywhere that the rest of the property gets, it's just treated like a wetlands.
Right, well, that, it's not a wetland. But yeah, that's, this is in the proposed new version that you're, that we're talking about, Peter.
Okay.
Yeah, which I mentioned earlier was lifted from the EEP's draft model bylaw. But I, I hear whatever, I hear what Eric's saying, and, you know, Toby, and, yeah. Okay, that's, that's all. I think that's it. Not too much, actually. So should we, anybody else on the, on the public hearing, I guess is going to be, the town meeting's going to be on the first, is that correct, Mitch?
That's correct, Saturday the first, and then the moderator will determine when to cease things and pick up on, on the Monday evening if that's necessary.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, well, let's move on to member items. Anybody have any member items?
How was the panel, Bob?
On the affordable housing, I think it was good. I think we answered a lot of, a lot of questions for folks, as well as sort of gave a pretty good primer on the MBTA Section 3A as well. And I think we, I think we calmed some fears down there about what, what was in it and what wasn't. And we, again, just talked a lot about what does, what does the kind of density that they're proposing look like. You know, we showed the slides of the seven or eight houses around town and some diagrams about, about what that looks like in the existing conditions we have, and answered some questions. Some other things came up that questioners proposed and so forth. But overall, I think it was, I think it was good, and they, everybody really appreciated us being there as a part of the, the conversation.
I have a follow-up to that, you know, based on my observation of not just that session, but, you know, hearing conversation around town, we, we have to be, I think we have to be a little bit measured, more measured in our, how we address this issue of, well, the, you know, the, the, this, this whole Chapter 3A doesn't really address infrastructure support. I mean, we, as, we as a planning board, other committees in town, other boards in town, do have the wherewithal to decline projects as they're presented for lack of sewer capacity, water capacity, whatever infrastructure you might be requiring for a given project. That all gets thoroughly vetted. And I, I'm afraid that if we respond by saying that, you know, the state doesn't really care about that, well, the state fully understands that basic utilities, water, sewer, whatnot, are required to support a site. And I, again, I've, I've heard it a number of times, and I, I hear people walk away, and, and their concern is, is what, how does that make any sense? Well.
Right.
Projects don't get approved if there isn't adequate infrastructure. And furthermore, under, you know, Chapter 3A, and, and I, I think other programs made available by DHCD in the state, there will be grant money that can be sit, can be, or may be considered for a given project that will be used to enhance specific infrastructure. So if a project happens to be located, you know, 100 yards away from where a water line starts and, or ends, and that's the difference between the viability of a project and its demise, well, the state may kick in grant money for that particular use. As I understand, what, you know, what the state is, it has proposed here.
Right, right. Yeah, I think we have to be, it's, it's hard to commute, communicate the subtlety of what I think the MBTA is saying, which is basically, you can't use the excuse of lack of infrastructure for the, for failing to meet our requirements and, and ask for a pass, you know? But obviously, we, a developer's got to make his project work with sewer, water, all that. And, and then on the other end, the treatment of that has to, has to happen. And if you're, you're expanding the tax base and adding people and adding, you know, property taxes to the, the thing, the ideas that property taxes are supporting your schools, supporting your infrastructure, supporting all that stuff, but it's hard for people to get a sense of that, I think, is project by project as it goes along. I do think it would be good to have some forums where we bring in water and sewer infrastructure conversations as well with the DPW or whoever we decide to, to bring in, to widen the discussion once people get the, get the lay of the land a little bit better about what we're, what we're being asked to look at.
Okay, so. Good information, Bob. Any other member items?
I have something.
All righty.
As advertised at our previous meeting, Town Green held their webinar on the effects of climate change on downtown. That was on March 8th, and I think well-received. We had some local folks, a merchant from Bear Skin Neck, talk about his flooding. Jim Gardner talked about stuff downtown, infrastructure, other things. We had the folks from Harvard Graduate School of Design and another outside expert and some Q and A. And there will be two follow-ups to that. One is a field trip next Tuesday, the 21st, downtown, just to see it at astronomical high tide. That's between 11:30 and 12:30, starting from Dock Square. And then the final webinar will be on Wednesday, the 29th, at 6:30 on Zoom, and that will be a bit more expertise speaking, and then primarily breakout sessions, one for Dock, one for downtown, and one for Long Beach, where folks can talk about the possible ways to adapt to the climate change. So that's, that's the Town Green story.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other member items? I have one item to bring up. I did circulate to everyone a, this statement from the Massachusetts Attorney General concerning MBTA communities. And what was kind of, I would say, interesting was her assertion that not only is the loss of grant money a possibility if one does not comply with the rezoning, but actual, she actually was talking about potential civil legal actions against those communities which don't comply, which is pretty, you know, that was a pretty strong statement, I thought. But it, it does potentially raise the ante. December of 2024 rolls around, and communities have not adopted the zoning that they need to adopt to be in compliance with the bylaw. So anyway, it's, it's there. I think it's time. I think it's on our, that statement's on our website now.
It is.
The Attorney General, so anybody can take a look at it. That's all I have. Any other public comment? No hands up?
Don't see any, Mr. Chair.
Jason, there was a, another little phrase in that advisory from the Attorney General saying that the zoning district cannot have limits on the size of units. I'm not sure how broadly that applies.
I don't know what she's, you know, I wonder how familiar she is with it, but who knows? That was a little odd.
That would be another pretty big thing for us.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, that's, we don't have any comments, and it is just 11 after 9:00 in a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I will second.
Harry, it's seconded by Tom. Roll call vote. Harry?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Nah.
Aye.
I'm joining the motion. 5-0, meeting is adjourned, and we'll follow up with some of the stuff that we talked about with the Warren articles. And have a good night, everyone.
Take care.
Good night.
Good night.